Under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Here.
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 All aldermen are present. Tonight, I'd like to take time to honor our fifth grade JFL football team. For an undefeated season in the Mid-State Conference and an overall record of six and one. I'd like to introduce the coaches first, and they will introduce the players. Beforehand, I played on the very first tackled JFL team in Taylorville. It was forty-eight years ago. First year we had JFL. Started by a gentleman named Emil Mayer, my little son Mike Mayer, and Don Anderson was pivotal in starting this. So, next year will be the forty-ninth year, and two years will be the fiftieth year of the Junior Football League. So, I want to congratulate you, fifth graders who played. It's one of the best fifth grade teams I've ever seen. So, it was very nice to you. So, I introduce the coaches. Zach Crowley. Brent Smith. Scott Aldridge. Dan McNeely. And Matt Corso. Thank you, coaches. If Dan would introduce the players, if you'd stand and remain standing as Danny introduces you, the coach would be there.
Okay, Cole Ackerman, stand up. Austin Albright. Matty Allard. Ace Boblet. Landon Bowser. Spencer Brown. Alex Codwell. Jalen Champlin. Isaac Corso. Mason Farrell. Dontrell Franks. Joseph Hamel. Grayden Hughes. Isaiah Kraus. Owen Matier. Gabriel Mashad. Chase Mylan. Hayden Mahon. Ben Pisoni. Malik Pierce. Zeth Price. Dylan Ryland. Gabriel Sykes. Ethan Smith. Trent Turpak. Jace Wagner. King White. And Christian White.
You should just plaque to the fifth grade, maybe we can put it up at the junior high in the trophy case. It says, whereas the TJHS fifth grade JFL team has shown perseverance, hard work, dedication, and great coaching, and where the TJHS fifth grade JFL team was undefeated for the 2018 Mid-State Conference and finished with a record of six and one, and now therefore I Bruce Berry, Mayor of the City of Taylorville, do hereby proclaim October fifteenth, two thousand eighteen, as TJHS fifth grade JFL day. Congratulations. And then there's cake and ice cream for the players downstairs in the basement.
I don't see a laugh.
So, I couldn't hold it back, or no, I did.
Good, she's staying on her feet.
Not by my feet, not by my hands.
Hey, I was gonna ask you.
Out of the way.
Don't trip over those.
There you go.
You do. I'm good, sir.
Motion, alderman, Dorcheness, second alderman, Walters, roll call.
Yes.
Jim Hollis. Say yes.
Say yes.
Yes.
Martin Voda.
Yes.
Earl Walters.
Larry Bud.
Yes.
Motion, carries eight to zero. Planning and zoning recommendations, Taylor Memorial Hospital and solar energy farms and solar energy facilities. Mr. Housen.
Thank you, your honor, members of board aldermen. The planning and zoning commission met this evening within your public hearing to consider the application for a special use submitted by Taylor Memorial Hospital to build an eighty-foot-tall lattice-style telecommunications tower and antenna. The...
Yes.
Yes.
Motion, carries eight to zero. Plan and zoning recommendations, Taylor Memorial Hospital and solar energy farms and solar energy facilities. Mr. Housen.
Thank you, your honor, members of board aldermen. The planning and zoning commission met this evening within your public hearing to consider the application for a special use submitted by Taylor Memorial Hospital to build an eighty-foot-tall lattice-style telecommunications tower and antenna. The... They had submitted paperwork that met all of the criteria that... The counselor, Mr. Romano, had put forth in the prior meeting, which we tabled in a decision. And anyway, it met all the criteria, and there will however, I think, be another public hearing on the matter.
That is correct.
Thank you. And the planning and zoning commission, with a vote of five, plan to recommend to you approval of that application. I have signed that and turned it over, by the way, to the city clerk, or I could do that officially right now.
I'll make a motion to accept the planning and zoning commission's recommendation concerning...
Actually, the motion is simply to accept the findings of fact and recommendations, the written finding of facts recommendation as presented by the chairman of the plan commission, and then you'll move down to the motion to set the next public hearing if you please. Okay. The motion is to accept their...
Which is what I made, motion to accept their recommendation.
Motion, alderman, Jones, second alderman, Walters. Roll call.
Bruce Jones.
Yes.
Lee Landzadi.
Yes.
Jim Hollis.
Yes.
Martin Voda.
Yes.
Earl Walters.
Yes.
Larry Bud.
Yes.
Sean Burden.
Motion, carries eight to zero.
In a... In a second public hearing, we considered an ordinance amending sub-paragraph seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, and paragraph B and paragraph G, all of section ten dash fifteen dash four and section ten dash fifteen dash six of the Taylorville City Code regarding solar farms and solar energy facilities. The... This was made to clean up a prior ordinance that had been recommended and voted on. So, planning and zoning commission voted six to nothing to recommend your approval of that, of that, those ordinance changes. Did I say that correctly, sir?
You did. And I just wanted to make a motion to city council to accept the plan commission's recommendation and to actually adopt the ordinance that's presented on the next item on your agenda.
That's my motion.
I would say that that item on the agenda is omitted inadvertently, sub-paragraph seventeen.
Motion, alderman, Burden, alderman, Voda, second alderman, Dorcheness, roll call.
Lee Landzadi.
Yes.
Jim Hollis.
Yes.
Martin Voda.
Yes.
Earl Walters.
Yes.
Larry Bud.
Yes.
Sean Burden.
Yes.
Bruce Jones.
Yes.
Mayor votes.
Yes, mayor votes yes, motion carries nine to zero.
Those were the only things brought before the planning and zoning commission, sir, and there being no other business, we adjourn.
Thank you for your excellent work, Mr. Housen.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Mayor, I'd ask that you go to the bottom of the agenda while the planning commission chairman is here and to entertain the motion to set that at a public hearing in the ordinance agenda.
You go to the bottom of the front page of your agenda. Motion to set another public hearing in paragraph paragraph C and G of City Code, section ten dash ten dash seven, on Monday, November fifth, two thousand eighteen, at six fifty, before the city council and planning commission, concerning the planning commission submitted the ordinance of fact and recommendation regarding the application of Taylor Memorial Hospital for a special use permit and building permit, with waivers of certain provisions of the City Code for the construction and maintenance of new telecommunications antenna and related facilities on Taylor Memorial Hospital property.
So moved, your honor.
Motion, alderman, Walters, second alderman, Hollis, roll call.
Jim Hollis.
Yes.
Martin Voda.
Yes.
Earl Walters.
Yes.
Larry Bud.
Yes.
Sean Burden.
Yes.
Bernie Dorcheness.
Yes.
Bruce Jones.
Yes.
Motion carries eight to zero. Now, pay attention. If you go to discussion of and motion acknowledging, about halfway through on the front page, we'll go to that. Discussion and a motion acknowledging and rating any conflict of interest regarding attorney Rocky Romano representing the Taylor Fire Protection District and the City of Taylorville in the negotiation, preparation, and execution of the proposed agreement for fire protection services and emergency medical and/or rescue services for execution by and between Taylor Fire Protection District and the city, and any and all related matters thereto, and any other motions related thereto. Motion, alderman, Dorcheness.
Second.
Second alderman, Walters. Roll call.
Martin Voda.
Governor Demme, yes.
Earl Walters.
Yes.
Larry Bud.
Yes.
Sean Burden.
Yes.
Bernie Dorcheness. Bruce Jones. Lee Landzadi.
Yes.
And...
Motion.
Jim Hollis.
Yes.
Gentlemen, thank you for that vote, and I would just suggest that the Taylor Fire Protection District have just deceded at their special meeting, adopted a similar motion, and it is appropriate and proper by code of professional responsibility. As long as the two clients acknowledge a conflict, it's okay for me to represent both parties. And I think, I think both sides, I hope, feel that they've been well represented in the negotiations. So, thank you for your vote.
We'll go down right below that motion, resolution, agreement with the Taylor Fire Protection District. Have you guys all the agreements tonight, the updated version?
If I may speak to that, Mr. Mayor, because I have...
Let's get a motion first.
Yes.
Motion, alderman, Dorcheness.
Second alderman, Voda.
Discussion.
Yes, if you... What I asked the mayor to hand out is, you got in your packet, the one I had my footnote of October eleventh, in reviewing it again this afternoon, I got some typos I want to point out too. So, if you turn to page two, at the bottom of that document, it had Taylor Fire Protection District. That was changed to city. Your copy has the new change on it, it's like Taylor used to be there. And the one thing that alderman Bud approached me before the meeting that I want to address is that particular agreement says that if the, any resident of the Fire Protection District calls and asks for the Taylorville ambulance to respond to the area, the city, that request is subject to any calls... Well, let me rephrase that. That request is subject to any rotation procedures through the nine-one-one system that is then in effect with Christian County, or any rules or regulations you may have. If you should decide that your fire department should not respond initially, this protects you. It says that they don't have to go, they have to go to the rotation system. I want to point that out, Mr. Glenn, if you have a question. If you turn to the next page, three, at the first phrase there, absent tax year two thousand eighteen, there was a phrase that says, or in tax year two thousand nineteen. That was a typo that's been removed, you had the final copy. And then where it says, and in all applicable subsequent tax years, the word tax, it was omitted out of the original version. Then skipping down to sub-paragraph A, that language is adopted during each fiscal year of TFPD. That was an additional language. Page three, I mean, yeah, down at the bottom on C one, the word "the" right before "city" was removed. And then, I found this one, on page five, at the very top paragraph where it says, referring to exhibit B, it says, is general, it should say generally, so you'll need to make that correction on yours. And then where it says, six hundred and fifty thousand dollars, we're changing that to seven hundred thousand, not to exceed. I'll speak to that in a moment. And then I think if, I think those are the changes. Now, let me kind of, in summary, first of all, talk about what this is. This is your current agreement with the Taylor Fire Protection District will expire, would have expired in July of next year. This agreement, should you decide to accept it this evening, will supplant that. The old one will go away, this will be the new one. And what this agreement is doing, the Fire Protection District is committing to buying or putting out for bids to purchase a new fire engine that the fire department has requested, and certain equipment to go along with that. That exhibits A and B to this agreement, exhibit A is what the fire chief and his staff have put together as to what the specs are they want for the fire engine. Fire protection trustees have agreed with that. Exhibit B is a list of equipment, about fifty-seven thousand, just ballpark figures. The initial quotes for the fire engine came in anywhere between five hundred eighty-five thousand to six and a quarter. So, it was discussed, this evening, the Fire Protection District to do and not to exceed seven hundred thousand dollars, figuring just to protect it. When it comes when the specs come in, the trustees will make a vote on what is the lowest responsible, responsive bid to make a decision as to making the purchase. What their intent is doing, they have some funds that they've accumulated over the years. I want to point out publicly that by statute, these trustees have the specific right to accumulate funds to make these big-ticket purchases for vehicles, and that's why they've been carrying over these funds all these years. They'll probably be making a sizable down payment around three hundred or three hundred and fifty thousand for the vehicle, and then they're going to be making some plans to borrow the remaining over a ten-year payback period. And the way this agreement is designed, that they have a, each year they have a tax levy ordinance. In the past, it's been about a hundred and forty, a hundred and forty-two thousand, tax levy money's come in. Even though the tax levy, they've done a hundred and fifty-four thousand this year. You're not going to get that because it's a hundred, one oh two percent tax cap in Christian County. So, I have about a hundred and forty-two thousand coming in. They'll have administrative expenses around twenty-seven, thirty thousand dollars a year to take care of their expenses. And then whatever the obligation is on the loan, whether it be a lease purchase agreement or a financing thing, the next available funds will go to that to pay it. And now the trustees say, after those two items are taken care of, they will commit to turn over thirty thousand dollars to the city upon receipt of a, when you do your budget ordinance and appropriation on it, you'll have a line item for Taylor Fire Protection District, and you'll specify how that thirty thousand, you guys will decide how you want to spend it. They'll then go one time to the trustees, they'll vote on it, and then they'll turn, when they get the money, that excess money, they'll turn that thirty thousand over to the city. The city treasurer will put that in a separate checking account or bank account that's labeled Taylor Fire Protection District, and the city will be bound to spend it on those line items and those line items only. Now, they'll probably, if things go the way as planned, there'll be still some excess funds. Now, what I think the trustees would like to do, and will probably do, is those excess funds continue to accumulate it for the next major purchase that you folks would want to have. But, of course, with understanding that if there's a real emergency that comes up for some equipment or uniforms or what have you, air packs, they're free to come to the trustees, and they've never, the trustees have never turned down the city before in the thirty years it's been in operation, and they'll probably accommodate that request. So, that, that's the, and then the city with this equipment, as in the prior agreements, they will lease it during the life of this agreement, which is thirteen years. For a dollar, thirteen years, for a dollar. It's going to take a year, from what I understand, from the fire chief, that once the specs go out, it takes a year to build the machine, the fire engine. So, it puts its backs, that's why the thirteen years. When they get the equipment, it will have Taylor Fire Protection District labeled on it, like it's always in the past, give it, they'll lease it to the city for a dollar, for that time period. And then, and that the city, as in the prior agreements, will insure that vehicle, will maintain that vehicle, will have the operation of it, and will name the Taylor Fire Protection District and their trustees as additional name insured for liability and parking damage as you have in the existing agreements, and I think we changed there. And then there's a provision there that, that at the end of the lease, if the city has the option to buy it, same language we had before, either fair market value or whatever, left them alone. And what you want to be sure is that, if, you folks will do it, the future city councils have to be aware that if you don't spend it for what's going there, then the trustees can refuse to further give that thirty thousand dollars as it goes forward. So, that's kind of a protection. The trustees are doing due diligence with their constituents and with the tax money, but I want to make it clear that the particular statutory sections for Taylor Fire Protection District, they have the power, and quite frankly, probably a duty, to accumulate funds to make these major purchases as it goes on. Seven hundred thousand dollars is a good piece of change. And if they did not accumulate these funds, probably the tax money that comes in on an annual basis wouldn't be enough to finance a major purchase like that. So, that's the purpose of they accumulate funds. And if you'll go back, historically, the last ten years, as I understand it, they've purchased like three vehicles for the city. I think they're doing a good job. I've invited you this evening, I want to introduce you to Mary Cole. She's the president of the Taylorville Fire Protection District, and Ron Verardi is a trustee. Ron has been, since inception, for thirty years, is a trustee. He and Doug Cole, Mary's husband, passed five years ago, was the, and Ray Hi, were the three trustees that have been here, Mary graciously agreed to take over as president when Doug passed, and then David Pichetti took over when Ray Hi passed away. So, these, these folks have been very cooperative and very attuned to the city's needs, and I think they, they need to be recognized as being very attentive to your requests. And it's been a very pleasant negotiation, I think, even though I was wearing two hats, I think everybody was, had some good things to say, had some good discussions, and it came down to what I think is a fair agreement, so. Are there any questions thus far?
Yes.
Yes.
Your honor, if I may, I have a number of concerns, and maybe they can be explained away.
Sure.
Appreciate all your lengthy comments that you had here, but I'm looking at the bottom of page three.
Yes.
And it says there, I'm afraid what you alluded to, Mr. Attorney, the TFPD board trustees meeting, says trustees shall decide and determine which of said specific line items from said city appropriated budgeted expenses approved. That troubles me.
Well, that's the same practice they've been doing for thirty years, Mr. Walters.
But you said it was the city when you accomplished the meeting.
Yes, and I said correctly, is that the city will, in its budget system and its appropriation, will just, you guys got about one point four of them, so you could come up with thirty thousand of line items.
I can come up with thirty thousand, that's beside the point.
Right. City will, under this agreement, will decide what they want to request from the trustees, how to spend that thirty thousand dollars. Then that comes to trustees, and they'll do due diligence, and they'll either, they'll approve it. I'm sure they're going to approve it, but if everyone agrees, that's what it needs to be spent for. And quite frankly, that's what's been going on for thirty years. The fire chief comes, makes a request, they approve it, and it goes on forward. All this is really doing is helping the fire chief, and his request is to know upfront at the beginning of the year that he's got the funds, and has to keep coming back, because they don't meet every month. You know, they just meet so many times a year.
But you still haven't answered my question, Mr. Attorney. It says, the trustees shall decide and determine which of said specific line items.
Correct.
The trustees, it didn't say the city, it says the trustees.
The trustees will decide, once the city comes to them with the line items, if they're going to approve those line items. Yes, it's a two-way street. It's the same thing's been going on for thirty years.
I'm not concerned about the past thirty years, I'm looking at something that's brand new.
It's not changing.
Okay.
Under this agreement, basically. It's just saying, you're going to come one time, do that through the process.
Mr. Monk.
Yes. I have another question also.
Mr. Walters. On what you're talking about, you're talking about the very last sentence in that, on that page.
I'm talking about the entire thing, it starts on...
Number two.
It's on number two.
Number two.
It says, they'll determine which of the said specific line items from the city's appropriated and budgeted expenses, and that's what the chief will submit in his budget, and then they will submit that to the Fire Protection District for their approval as well, and then it'll go through the rest of our budget system.
It needs to be worded that way, then.
It is.
It's not worded that way.
Yeah, it is.
All right, I'm not happy with that explanation, I have another one. I'm looking at item number three. The city shall only use or expense such thirty thousand. On page four.
Okay.
Halfway down to number three. The city shall only use or expense such thirty thousand of annual TFPD tax funds from such designated TFPD account for these, for said fire department expenses that have been pre-approved by TFPD. I'm not comfortable with that. And then it goes on all the way down to the end, the whole goes to number four.
Once the city and the Fire Protection District has what we call a meeting of the minds, this is what you're going to spend the money on, that's what needs to be spent, that's what that's saying.
I like to keep, use the KISS principle, keep it simple stupid, and I'm not reading it that way.
I don't want to...
Okay. And then I'm looking at...
Pretty straightforward, man.
Page eight, number nine. I thought we were originally talking about a ten-year agreement. Before you say anything, I understand it takes a year to do it, but a hundred and fifty-six, that's thirteen years for this agreement.
Which gives you thirteen years.
I had heard of it ten years, but thirteen years, no. And then the other, a few sentences down from there, it talks about the hundred and twenty days. That's way too long, that's four months.
That's the same that Ray McChay had now. That's the same language you got now, that you've had for thirty years.
But again, I'm not concerned, it was the same language, this is something brand new, Mr. Attorney.
What this is saying is it renews after that thirteen years, every year, unless either party on a hundred and twenty day notice says no. Because why a hundred and twenty days? Just, just think about this for a moment. If for some reason, on a three-day notice, they say, all right, it's over with, give us back the fire engine, what are you going to do?
I'm talking about ninety days, I'd be comfortable with.
Okay, well.
Without a hundred and twenty. Anyway, those are my concerns, thank you.
Just one comment, just for clarification, we're talking about this new truck, the new apparatus. Just for clarification and confirmation for the, for the media, we're not buying an additional piece of fleet equipment, we're trading in an aging unit, is that correct, Chief?
That's right, correct.
So the monies are, we're not adding to the fleet, and it's always an issue that comes to the table, as we add something in here, total understanding isn't given to the public. I just want to make sure that the public does understand that we are buying a new piece of equipment to replace an aging piece of equipment.
And I think that's a valid point, and I think we ought to have the fire chief speak to that, because this is not something that the trustees suggested. This is the fire chief who's come to them because of this, this fireman. There was a safety issue on the existing truck, and besides being aging, on how they have to go to fires, and he came to the trustees, says we need to get rid of the old one and get the new, so.
Correct, it's a nineteen eighty-nine model lease. The firefighters are driving to scenes without the benefit of the enclosed cab, there's just a simple lap belt, there's really nothing much left, it's incompatible with NFA. And, and so, feeling that pressure, and some other components that came into this, we need to act on, I thought, and so. So that's, to the answer, like, we couldn't even fit them, believe it or not, we couldn't even get a new piece of equipment in there, and still keep that as a reserve, so we, we're kind of ragged piece, the other one. I don't know, definitely, we stole the last truck, we went to a smarter community, and all of their thrilled to have, and we were thrilled to get rid of it, so, but, but that's what happened.
Okay, thank you.
I'd just might add, it's the city's not purchasing the truck, the Table Fire Protection District is purchasing the truck. And I just might add, I enjoyed the negotiations with the Fire Protection District, I thought they really stood up and spoke proposals on their mind. Alderman Dorcheness from the city did an excellent job of arising with different issues, and we took care of that at the meeting this afternoon, and I would personally like to thank President Cole and Treasurer Verardi, and also Clerk Pachetti, or whatever his title is, they did an excellent job, and their, their whole thing about doing this, and it runs deep in Mary's family, to protect the people that live outside of the city. And I wanted to thank you personally, thank you.
I didn't know if they understood the thing, the council.
Just thank you for the way that the negotiations went, and the compromises made on both sides to come to an agreeable agreement, and I'd just like everybody for their help in getting this done.
Roll call.
Earl Walters?
Yeah.
Alderman Dorcheness, seconded by Alderman Boda.
And that's to adopt the resolution?
Yes.
I will pass.
Larry Bud?
Yes.
Sean Burdell?
Yes.
Ernie Dorcheness?
Yes.
Bruce Jones?
Yes.
Lee Landzati?
Yes.
Jim Olive?
Yes.
Martin Boda?
Yes.
Earl Walters?
I'm staying.
Motion carries seven to zero.
My comment, Mayor, now that this is passed, I believe that the, the next item is that Mary and Mr. Pachetti are going to come to your office sometime March noon and sign the agreement, and you guys will sign on your end, and I believe the fire chief is, is going to be now looking for some financing alternatives with cooperation, city treasurer's office, so that the trustees are willing to call a special meeting to expedite this, and to entertain the financing proceed alternatives, and to put together the final bidding specifications and get this out for bid, and as soon as possible to get this moving. That's what your plan is. Okay, so Alderman Olive?
I would just like to, Mr. Cole and Mr. Verardi, I remember back when the Fire Protection District was formed, so my, my comment is to you folks, as if you have done a wonderful job, everything has gone smoothly, and I guess it was time to make a few minor changes, but you have done an excellent job. My hat is off to you.
Thank you. I might add, we're going to issue a joint press release tomorrow afternoon, and so it'll evolve the agreement to things like that, and again, thank you again. Okay, number four, resolution agreement with the Table Fire Protection District, also a resolution to amend the government cooperation agreement with the city of Charleston. So, be the motion to, the road resolution, so my... Motion Alderman Dorcheness, I need to do them separate.
Yeah, yeah, I did a resolution with the amendment of government cooperation agreement, and just, I may comment, while, and speak with the fire chief, actually, the agreement you have here, in her version, is prepare the city of Charleston, but the only change that's been made is going from the twenty-five dollar to a thirty dollar per...
Correct.
Or something.
Per, per claim.
Per claim. And that, and so, I asked the city clerk, which she graciously did, is put, by interlineation, back twenty-five to thirty, in the language amended, if you adopt this resolution, then I believe that the city clerk will contact the city of Charleston, ask them to make those changes, give it back, and they're going to sign it. For some reason, I've got to sign it, and, and their city treasurer's got to sign it, city clerk's signed it, so that's the resolution given.
Motion Alderman Dorcheness, seconded by Alderman Bud. Roll call.
Larry Bud?
Yes.
Sean Burdell?
Yes.
Yes.
Lee Landzati?
Yes.
Jim Olive?
Yes.
Martin Boda?
Yes.
Earl Walters?
Yes.
Larry Bud?
Yes.
Motion carries...
Yes.
Mayor votes, yes, motion carries nine to zero. An ordinance authorizes the sale of personal property owned by the Taterville Fire Protection District, nineteen ninety-three Ford F three fifty type three ambulances. So, motion Alderman Burdell, seconded by Alderman Olive. Roll call.
Sean Burdell?
Yes.
Ernie Dorcheness?
Yes.
Bruce Jones?
Yes.
Lee Landzati?
Yes.
Jim Olive?
Yes.
Martin Boda?
Yes.
Earl Walters?
Yes.
Larry Bud?
Yes.
Sean Burdell?
Yes.
Mayor Barry?
Yes.
Motion carries... Mayor votes, yes, motion carries nine to zero. An ordinance authorizes the sale of personal property owned by the city of Taterville, two thousand and one Kawasaki Mule. Motion Alderman Burdell? Seconded by Alderman Olive. Roll call.
Ernie Dorcheness?
Yes.
Bruce Jones?
Yes.
Lee Landzati?
Yes.
Jim Olive?
Yes.
Martin Boda?
Yes.
Earl Walters?
Yes.
Larry Bud?
Yes.
Sean Burdell?
Yes.
Mayor Barry?
Yes.
Larry Bud?
Yes.
Sean Burdell?
Yes.
Mayor Barry?
Yes. Motion carries nine to zero. An ordinance amending section one dash ten dash three A and section eight dash four dash nine A to J one, and adding A two one to section eight dash four dash nine of the Taterville City Code, seventy-five thousand gallons of free water per month for economic and business reasons. Motion Alderman Burdell, seconded.
Seconded.
Alderman Jones, questions or comments?
One comment, yeah.
Comment, Alderman Walters?
What do we anticipate, how many gallons they would normally use? Do we have an idea?
Mr. Spiegel, do you have an answer to that?
No, they're just starting out. They, they made some projections, and I don't, quite frankly, I don't remember what they were, but we don't really have anything to go off, go off on at this point, because they're just new, and they're just in the process of filling tanks.
All right. All right. Alderman Burdell, can we do that?
No, I'm just, I had the same thing. It's going to be over seventy-five thousand gallons, according to their work.
Roll call.
Bruce Jones?
Yes.
Lee Landzati?
Yes.
Jim Olive?
Yes.
Martin Boda?
Yes.
Earl Walters?
Yes.
Larry Bud?
Yes.
Sean Burdell?
Yes.
Ernie Dorcheness?
Yes.
Bruce Jones?
Yes.
Lee Landzati?
Yes.
Jim Olive?
Yes.
Martin Boda?
Yes.
Earl Walters?
Yes.
Larry Bud?
Yes.
Sean Burdell?
Yes.
Mayor Barry?
Mayor votes, yes, motion carries nine to zero.
We're down to Brian Stewart.
Now, back, back down to resolution, Brian W. Stewart easement agreement and subordination agreement. Motion Alderman Dorcheness, seconded by Alderman Burdell, discussion?
Yes. The, the math was not attached?
Attached. Where, where's this property at? Probably around, ten oh nine or ten thirteen East Main, it's by Richard Turner's house. Okay, what, what happened, when we repaid the road, the, the road is higher than those yards, so it caused a flooding issue in those roads. It's on the, on the east side of the railroad tracks, it's already been paved.
Okay, so we're getting an easement to, to take care of the problem?
Right.
Okay.
And they request just us to take care of the problem, so.
Okay. If I understand, the, the steward owners have signed easement agreement, and it's been submitted to their mortgage company for the subordination.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Roll call.
Lee Landzati?
Yes.
Jim Olive?
Yes.
Martin Boda?
Yes.
Earl Walters?
Yes.
Sean Burdell?
Yes.
Mayor Barry?
Yes.
Mayor Barry?
Yes. Motion carries... Okay. City attorney, I think.
No, I'll probably be quick, but the mayor's given me a number of assignments, first of which is the annexation of the Banco property, that is located generally east of the current Bank property on, on the northern avenue. And we met today with the city engineer, and he's going to be preparing an annexation plan, and would, and locate the title company to have the necessary title work, to see who the legal title owners are, and then we'll be asking you probably sometime in November, assuming they're going to sign a petition annex in to adopt an annexation ordinance to bring that property into the city. So that's on the horizon. The other thing that we've been working on is on the, we met today again with the city engineer, and also Mr. DeFreyde's engineering firm that represents the city and the state and shake principals, going forward to get the necessary sanitary sewer easements. We met with Mr. Spiegel as well, there's some issue, or maybe some question perhaps, that we have a water line there that may or may not be included on, on with an easement. So, Mr. DeFreyde's office is going to be preparing easement plans for the state and shake property, for the Morton property, and possibly granddaughter mode property if we need it. And then I've also contacted today the title company to prepare title work to, so we can get moving forward with that. And they're ready to start putting that, according to Mr. DeFreyde's, I think they're talking about getting bids out quickly, building, building on that project. The other issue we discussed this morning, too, was on the motor fuel tax dispute with Illinois Department of Transportation, the mayor's got a handle on that, he's, you passed a motion, last council meeting, to have me adopt a resolution for the two thousand, for the spillway bridge resolution, and, the project, excuse me, and I think it's been discovered, you already had a resolution, and according to Mr. Wiseman, is that it just needs the mayor's signature, you'd already passed that resolution some time ago, so the mayor's going to take care of that, so I have it prepared to take forward.
I'm going to sign those copies today.
Today, so I should be submitted.
Look at the money we save.
I'm sorry?
Look at the money we save.
About that. Yeah, about that. It was all the same meaning that I did.
I appreciate it.
Okay, all right. Then, and tonight, you've got the Morton, the twenty feet bill that we need to get taken care of, and it's on your bills tonight. I'd sent you a, oh, there's been, I've, I've sent you copies of Freedom Information request that I prepared for the mayor to submit to Illinois Department of Revenue and Department of Economic Opportunity, Commerce Opportunity, and which he's done at the request of Mary Renner and McDermann, who is working on the Taterville Christian County Enterprise Zone, to get records going from the inception of when you guys created that, up to date, it's my understanding with that information, that he'll, they'll be able to, as he goes out and tries to market, to show what benefits certain industries have received from that. I don't know if you've got any response yet, but the state is supposed to deal with the five industries, and that's coming along, so we'll see what happens. I also, finally, I sent out to you a, kind of cleanup project for you guys, for your ordinance violation cases. As you saw, that a number of, I've gone through, and those that were, I think we used it for the dollar threshold, or those that we, we've tried to find, and the police department can't locate the people, we've just, I did a mass motion, and a quarter was entered to transfer those to collections, so we don't throw more good money after bad, so to speak. And we've got another twenty-five that I threw out there for a rule to show causes, that'll be heard on August fourteenth. Some of them have already come back that we can't find them, so we'll be probably transferring a number more to collections, and let them take a shot at that. The last go-around we had, with the mayor's permission, we had three OBs that the dependents were involuntary visitors to the Department of Corrections, so we decided just to dismiss those cases, and not be sure that they're going to be there for a while, so we, we dismissed those cases. So we're trying to keep a handle on it, trying to keep your costs down, and go after those we think we can collect, but you, you know, you don't want to send the wrong message out here, that if they, if they don't pay, we just don't, we give up. We have to do an effort to make sure that justice is being enforced, because your officer's doing a great job, and particularly the, the ordinances that we see violations are those that are, that are early morning hours between twelve and six, and seem to bring up the best of people, so we have a good couple of those. Any questions? Mr. Walters?
No, I'm all right.
Oh, good.
I'm still pulling all of the previous ones.
All right. More time.
Thank you.
Okay, that's it.
All right, to Mayor, okay. The cleanup day was on Saturday, thank you to Alderman Walters, Olive and Bud, disappointing that only three Alderman showed up. We need to get more volunteers for October twenty-seventh. If Alderman can help and get their constituents to volunteer, that would be appreciated. I met this morning with city engineer Green and state and shake engineer Don DeFreyde's to discuss the easements for the sewer. Hopefully, they will break ground within two or three weeks. The street department took another house down on South Wind Dot, this makes the twentieth[1664.73] our new turf field, thanks to our community for privately funding that whole issue. We do have good people in Tannenbaum. Nothing but great comments about the school resource officer. Moving forward with that, I've talked to the principals, the students, a lot of people, they're really impressed with Officer Thomas and everything that's going on with that. Please remember, our next cleanup day is October twenty-seventh. Let's try to get everyone to help clean up our city. And the last but not least, we must watch our expenditures and try to raise our revenues, so I'm looking for any type of Alderman input and how we can raise the revenues. So that's all I have tonight. Thank you. Committee reports. Discussion and/or motions to approve, adopt, and/or deny, and/or table, and/or man, and/or refer to an appropriate committee, in whole and part, the matters regarding the following subject matters discussed at the committee level. Emergency services. Alderman Dorchiness?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The first motion that came out of the emergency services meeting was a motion recommended to city council to approve Fire Chief Cruz's request to apply for the twenty eighteen FEMA assistance to firefighters grant. I'd like to make that in form of motion.
Motion by Alderman Dorchiness?
Okay.
Second by Alderman Olive. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Next motion was to recommend to the city council to direct city attorney Romano to prepare a proposal to present to the table Fire Protection District. He's already done that, so that's on the move. The next motion was to recommend to the city council to forward discussions regarding an ambulance service ordinance to the ordinance committee. That, I've already discussed this with, uh, Mr. Jones, and, uh, that ordinance, uh, is going to remain with emergency services and we'll put together an ordinance and maybe your committee can review it after we're done with it. Mr. Jones, I, I looked at his, um, um, his workload, it looks like he's been kinda light lately, so I'd like to send something to him to help him out.
Now, I appreciate your comments, but as I, uh, said on the phone in our conversation that, uh, rather than, rather than, uh, repeating and rehashing all of the things that were said at the meeting the other night, and going through two committees rather than one committee and passing it off and on, I believe that in order to streamline this procedure, that staying with the emergency services committee would probably be our best course of action, considering we have the tutelage of our renowned city attorney to help us along the way.
And Jones is trying to help you out personally.
Yeah, I, I, I appreciate that.
Well, I wanted him to see those comments, so I appreciate him speaking out.
Don't forget to check.
That's why I'm here.
I did make a phone call to Paula Dunn on Friday, and she did not answer and has not got back to me. I will call her again tomorrow to try to set up a meeting with her, Chief Cruz and the good old attorney, and see if we can't, uh, get some type of ordinance to the next emergency services meeting. So thank you.
Thank you.
Personnel, Alderman Dorchiness?
Thank you, Your Honor. We had one motion come out of the personal committee, came out of a closed session regarding a grievance that had been filed against the city, and that motion was to recommend it, recommendation to the city council to pay five officers a one-half hour of overtime related to the, uh, discussions and related to that, uh, particular grievance. Uh, those are, I think pretty much everybody was at that meeting, I understand it was transpired during that, uh, that closed session, so I'll make that in form of motion, Your Honor.
Most of Alderman Dorchiness, second by Alderman Dorchiness. Roll call.
Jim Olah?
Yes.
Martin Boda?
Yes.
Earl Walters?
Yes.
Larry Bud?
Yes.
Sean Burdell?
Yes.
Yes.
Doris Jones? Bruce Jones?
Yes.
Yes. Motion carries eight to zero.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Lincoln Airport, Alderman Luzotti.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Motion to recommend to the city council to allow airport manager Newberry to renew the annual service agreement with the QT pod, that price not to exceed one thousand ninety-five dollars for the year. I'd like to make that in form of motion.
Thank you. Most of Alderman Luzotti, second by Alderman Dorchiness. Roll call.
I have a question. What is a QT pod?
He had to be there.
No. I'm not being facetious, but is it something that's affixes to the bill, say?
Mr. Newberry?
Some credit card reader?
Yeah.
Roll call. Press it, not the language.
Martin Boda?
Yes.
Earl Walters?
Yes.
Larry Bud?
Yes.
Sean Burdell?
Yes.
Yes.
Doris Jones?
Yes.
Lee Landzai?
Yes.
Jamie Duggan?
Yes.
Motion carries eight to zero. Water and environmental meeting.
I convinced the mayor, the motion was to recommend to the city council to direct the city attorney to review the contract of Blue Stem and make any necessary changes. Make that form of motion.
Most of Alderman Dorchiness, second by Alderman Dorchiness. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Can I speak to that for a moment? Because I read the agreement this afternoon, and I, I just want some direction where you're going with this. Uh, this is not, in fact, I met the gentleman there, and I'm ready, I put the municipal in here. Uh, just so you understand, I don't know how far we can go with this, but what they're essentially wanting you to do, as I read this agreement, is that you're gonna sign a document that says for six months' time, you're out of the negotiation with anybody else, you can only deal with them, and they're going to spend thirty-six thou, thirty-five thousand dollars of their funds doing some kind of a development project. If you decide something better comes along and you wanna back out of that, it's gonna cost you a hundred and fifty percent of that thirty-five thousand, to pay them back for that.
That's just within that six-month period.
Yes, but the way the contract is worded, it is intended that you will, quote, negotiate in good faith, that's a question of fact, that whatever they come up with, that, uh, you're obligated yourself, that, that the intent here is to get a long-term agreement with them. They say a long, permanent long-term agreement for a pr, undetermined price, okay? Say a low price, they don't say what price. So what I'm just, I'm warning you to want, that if you do this, you're actually almost deciding you're gonna go with them, and unknown what they're gonna charge you. They also say that during this six-month period, they give you information and share with you, you must keep it confidential, it's gonna violate Freedom Information Act, because anything that comes to the committee level that you're gonna evaluate it, or you're gonna city council, it's public record, and you're now, uh, they can, the way this is written, that they can sue you for damages and injunction because you discussed it in an open session, which I think is contrary to Illinois law, subjects you to damages and to attorney fees, and so, if I, if you're asking me to look at this and to tweak this, it'd be a lot of changes, but I'll do what you want.
That's what we're asking you to do, tweak it.
I'm just saying that, um, I don't understand why, you know, and I brought that up at the dinner at the municipal, I talked to Jamie, I said, I don't understand, you guys know what you wanna do, you ought to have enough information from the public records of the city to decide what you think it's gonna cost the city to do this, and how much the, you know, ballpark of where it's gonna be, that's where you should focus on it, not tie it in down, uh, for six months and keep them in the dark about this, so, uh, so he knows my feelings about it at that, at dinner meetings, so, I don't know, I just need some feedback from you folks to say, how far you want me to push this? I don't like this agreement.
The motion was ordered to you to make those changes, to protect us.
All right.
So, when we say protect us, protect us in the fashion that you don't wrap us in bubble wrap and put us in the closet, but to protect us as we move forward with the solar project.
And I think with that, you were at that meeting too, with those guys, and I said, I'm not in favor of, of a exclusive agreement. I mean, these, you're a public entity, and if someone else comes along and says, hey, we can do a better deal for your water plant and do the solar energy, you ought to have had opportunities to discuss that with those folks.
And the Freedom Information Act is a good point to bring up.
That is a big point.
Truly, they're aware that we are, you know, required to give up information if somebody asks for it, so.
When I brought that in.
Something that needs to be tweaked out.
In that evening, because I know you were talking to one of them, and the mayor and I were hitting on the other one with these ideas, is that, because they weren't, they were from, um, out of state, Kansas or somewhere, or Nebraska somewhere, and we brought up the Freedom Information Act, that we have different, I know what it is in Nebraska, but we have different rules here in Illinois, that we, whatever comes on the public record, it's fair game, we can't be, uh, forced to, uh, we can't be held at.
Now, according to Jamie at the meeting the other night, they have signed an agreement with, I think, I wanna say Malon or something, he mentioned one or two in Illinois that they had this agreement. Myron was it? And then maybe Monmouth, I think was mentioned, but.
Money.
They have reached this agreement in Illinois, basically the same that they're giving here, so that's what we're looking for direction from you.
Okay.
It's something that they really have said that they need a six-month period in order to show us what we able to do and sign this thing to give them, because they are gonna expend so much money, and at the end of that six-month period, no cost us, they will give us what they think we should do, and we have the right then to either accept it or, or deny it. Another thing that was brought up by Alderman Walters at the meeting, a lot of this was Ameren's poses raising rates, basically three percent a year, they're only gonna raise it two percent a year, but this past year, Ameren's rates went down, and so we made that motion, or, you know, thought that, you know, will you guys stay the same, or does it keep escalating at two percent? So I, I think what we're asking you is to look more into it, maybe see what other cities in Illinois have done with this agreement, because every solar company I've talked to, and it's probably four or five now, have all requested this type of exclusivity agreement.
Sure.
So what I'm saying, that it's gotta have some legal.
Well, it hasn't any legal effect, it's just, it's just the nature of the beast. They wanna control, I think, the environment in which they work in.
Right.
So there's nothing legal about that, except from what I read is not what you've just described that Jamie's telling you in the committee level. You're gonna be, this is, my suggestion, it's right at the top of my head reading this afternoon, is to say, hey, you know, uh, come on here, do your thing, but we're not gonna obligate to do anything, period, no matter what you come up with, until we see the numbers and evaluate it, and what you put on the table has to be a matter of public record. And, uh, and, uh, you can't be, uh, if someone else comes up, good, as we remember what we also learned at, up there at the municipal league, that there's like, the state of Illinois is not up to par, there's seven hundred and some applications out here for solar facilities, and only eighty different REC's they talked about. And so, um, you know, um, if someone else comes to you guys and you're not gonna be able to talk to them, and that window is like coming up here in November, and there's another one, so, hate to take you out of the market, but.
The way, the way Jamie described it though, is the REC is a, a plus at the end.
Yes, the ice on the cake, that, that's what makes your money.
The way he explained it Thursday night's meeting is, they're willing to do the project with or without the lottery, okay? So, I don't know if that's necessarily true or not, but that's what he's claiming.
Right.
So they wanna go through with the project whether they get to that lottery drawing or not, and of course he thinks there's gonna be a second round of those lottery drawings, and I don't know if there'll be a third round or whatever, so, and you know that seven hundred people have applied for a lottery, you know, you can probably kick out ten percent on free, not having the proper paperwork or documentation or whatever the reason they get kicked out, but you know there's gonna be several of those, so, and he says you automatically go into the next lottery when that happens, if you didn't get picked the first time, I don't know. I don't know if any of that's true, that's just what he's claiming. But, uh, so, if what he's saying is true, and they're willing to go through with the project without the lottery system, without them credits, then, as that could cost the city table a dime, it's basically a six-month period, maybe you can work on that as far as maybe they don't have to be six months, maybe four months.
I'll reach out to him, he, he sent me an email on, uh, it was like Friday I was in a seminar out of town, but, uh, reach out to him and just remind him of the, the conversation I had at, at dinner, as to what the thoughts were, and see if they're, and if they're gonna say no to all our suggestions, we'll, we'll push this.
Alderman Walters?
I brought up at the meeting, why wouldn't we want to bid on this? Some of my fellow Alder are very strong on bid, bidding. Why wouldn't the city of Tannenbaum want to put this out for bids? Because the way it's worded, now that I've heard from our city attorney, it sounds like it's a given that they're gonna get the project.
Well, the first question, what, what, what do you want us to bid?
I want you to bid for a solar facility at the water plant.
Okay, but we need to know the size, the capability, we need to know all that stuff. Need to scope work, and we don't have that. That's part of the study they're gonna do, that's what they're gonna provide us.
Well, we're putting up for bids, wouldn't the other, the, the companies that bid on do the same thing?
But it sounds like they want a timeframe.
I think each company we bid on would have to expend some money to come in and give us a, a good bid, is what I'm saying, and they're asking, you know, and I think, Blue Stem is gonna spend like thirty-five thousand dollars, so they're wanting something for that, they're not promised anything, and we really won't know exactly what we need until this basic agreement is, is reached by them and what, what they tell us. Yes, we can, we can give them six months, we can give Keystone, I think made a, made for six months, you know, we can keep doing that, we wanna try to move forward, there's nobody on the council that I'm aware of that has much expertise in solar farms, I know I don't, so what I think was the consensus at the meeting the other night is let attorney Romano look more into it to see if we can come up with a viable so, solution. Of course, Jamie was not the expert on it either, he said he would go back, he's got higher-ups also, so maybe, like I said, I think we're just gonna give the direction to Alderman Romano to do the groundwork and see what he can come up with.
I take it.
I don't think we're gonna spend any money, so, except for.
Jamie said Thursday night, we're, we're not getting bids on us putting in a solar farm, we're getting bid on them to do the project, and at the end, they're gonna give us, give us a reduced rate on electricity costs, so, whatever, according to him, it's gonna be lower than what Ameren is charging us, so, the city has zero dollars in this, according to Blue Stem, we have zero dollars in it, and we get a reduced rate on our electricity costs at the water plant, so, hopefully long-term, we're gonna come out pretty good as far as financing the electricity cost at the water plant, which means quite a bit more reason now.
You hope that's the case, but remember Jamie's the salesman, he's not the one that's gonna assess this, determine the contract, so, and we talked about that that dinner too, is that, I'll try to focus something, I'll, I'll reach out to him and explain again our sentiments, that we're, you're entertaining the idea of wanting to go forward, but we don't want to be locked in, that no matter what you come up with, we can, we're gonna be bound by it, and I don't like this word, whenever you use this word, negotiating good faith, that has a legal meaning, that, if, if they say it's a, you know, that'll be a, you know, whatever price is, you just can't say no, because it, it, several places in here it says, the, the intent here is to, uh, is to negotiate in good faith, and you represent and warrant that by entering this agreement that you desire in good faith it'll result in execution of a long-term agreement between each other. That's bad language, in my mind, I believe.
Just, as the mayor alluded to, when prices stay the same, and they're comparing themselves to Ameren, we don't get our electricity from Ameren all the time. We may get it from home field energy or direct energy, we've got Ted Bailey, who's been with us for almost ten years now, directing our electrical contracts, which has gotten us lower than what Ameren has been able to get for us, so he keeps comparing to Ameren, and he may not realize that we have a broker that gets us a better deal than what Ameren has, has given us. I think only one time has Ameren been the low bidder for the city of Tannenbaum's electricity, so that's something that you can put in your hat too, uh, and when those prices stay the same, we, we get to reap that. Mayor was saying, and what Jamie said was, we want a, a, a contract, and we will have that whole price set for the term of the contract, so there won't be any ability to stay the same or lower the rate during that time, so, and they're saying raising, as Mr., would you see, he said two percent, right? Yeah, he said, well, utilities always go up three percent, so what, we're only gonna do it two, well, right there, he said, they always go up, well, they don't always go up, sometimes they do go down, so we don't wanna get locked into something that goes like this, and then everybody else is right here.
Gotcha. And then also, Your Honor, people like myself, where I live, and also on the west end of town, you've got Shelby Electric that can't participate, you've got Blue Electric that can't participate.
But that, that doesn't matter, because this is only at the water plant, this isn't for the, this isn't for the.
I was, I was thinking back on what you were saying, Alderman Jones, the citizen benefit from this, I'm a citizen, I will benefit from what Ameren's doing.
Will you benefit from, from, if we would give this agreement, you would benefit because the city would not have to pay.
And this, this kind of took a left-hand turn, Ameren was an example, it doesn't, they're comparing pricing, not who distributing the power.
Exactly, just, just the prices.
So it doesn't matter if it's Ameren or home field, or whoever did, whatever we're getting that power for, cost-wise.
Yeah.
Is what they're gonna be negotiating, that it's gonna be lower than that, so it doesn't really matter who's selling it to us.
Okay, so I think there's a motion on the floor to direct city attorney to review the contract with Blue Stem and make any necessary changes, so. There's a motion, Alderman Dorchiness, second. So that passes, so everybody in agreement with that. Go ahead, Alderman Dorchiness.
Uh, the next motion that came on the meeting was motion to authorize and direct the mayor to sign payer request number fifteen from Plucker Construction in amount of one million, three hundred and thirty-five thousand, six hundred and ninety dollars for work on the new water treatment plant, and forward the request to the IEPA Global Interest Loan Program for disbursement and a prepayment of same pending receipt of disbursement from the IEPA. This conditioned upon receipt of a signed and canned claim waiver in this amount and recommendation by the project engineer that the work had been performed satisfactorily. I'll make that.
Most of Alderman Dorchiness, second by Alderman Olive. Roll call.
Earl Walters?
Yes.
Larry Bud?
Yes.
Sean Burdell?
Yes.
Bernie Dorchiness?
Yes.
Bruce Jones?
Yes.
Lee Van Zijde?
Yes.
Jim Allen?
Yes.
Martin Boda?
Yes.
Motion carries eight to zero.
Next motion was to recommend to the city council to pay Benton Associates thirty-five thousand, three hundred dollars and seventy cents for the work performed related to the construction of new water treatment plant from September second of two thousand eighteen through September twenty-ninth of two thousand eighteen. I'll make that a form of motion.
Most of Alderman Burdell, second by Alderman Doug. Roll call.
Larry Bud?
Yes.
Sean Burdell?
Yes.
Bernie Dornes?
Yes.
Bruce Jones?
Yes.
Lee Van Zijde?
Yes.
Jim Allen?
Yes.
Martin Boda?
Yes.
Earl Walters?
Yes.
Motion carries eight to zero.
Next motion was to recommend to the city council to pay Clark Deets in amount of three thousand, one hundred and seven dollars and twenty cents for the work performed related to the construction of new water treatment plant from September first of two thousand eighteen through September twenty-eighth of two thousand eighteen. Make that a form of motion.
Most of Alderman Burdell, second by Alderman Doug. Roll call.
Sean Burdell?
Yes.
Bernie Dornes?
Yes.
Bruce Jones?
Yes.
Lee Van Zijde?
Yes.
Jim Allen?
Yes.
Martin Boda?
Yes.
Earl Walters?
Yes.
Larry Bud?
Yes.
Motion carries eight to zero.
Next motion was to recommend to the city council to pay Dickinson Hussman in the amount of two thousand, eight hundred and ninety-seven dollars and nine ninety cents for work performed related to the construction of new water treatment plant from September first of two thousand eighteen through September thirtieth of two thousand eighteen. Make that a form of motion.
Most of Alderman Burdell, second by Alderman Dorchenaz. Roll call.
Bernie Dorchenaz?
Yes.
Bruce Jones?
Yes.
Lee Van Zijde?
Yes.
Jim Allen?
Yes.
Martin Boda?
Yes.
Earl Walters?
Yes.
Larry Bud?
Yes.
Sean Burdell?
Yes.
Motion carries eight to zero.
Next motion was to recommend to the city council to direct the city attorney to prepare an ordinance to amend the city code, changing the wording to the first day of the next to twenty-second day of the, and renew the words thereafter.
Of which code section?
Are you following that? Well.
Give me a code section, I'll find that.
It's not in there, I apologize for that.
Second. Most of Alderman Burdell, second.
Daddy water, something I said.
We'll get you the code number.
Second by Alderman Dorchenaz. Roll call.
We've had a long time.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
The last motion was to recommend the city council to direct the city attorney to prepare an ordinance to amend the city code to allow a larger lighted sign at the new water treatment plant.
Most of Alderman Burdell, second by Alderman Dorchenaz. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Question, is that in it? Is that the zoning issue?
And we were in R1 out there.
Yeah, they're in R1 now, so.
Yeah. There's an ordinance to safely have a small sign and not a large sign.
Also zoning issue.
Okay, so we have to have a public hearing on that. You want to give me the code section on that? Thank you.
Alderman Doug.
Okay. Motion to progress by name of bills of one million, three hundred and eighty-five thousand, sixty-two dollars and thirty-six cents, and form of the contract.
Most of Alderman Doug, second by Alderman Dorchenaz. Comments?
KMR and General Light Roads, two to four, fifty-eight thousand, eight hundred and thirty-three fifty. County Public Wrist, from November, twenty-four thousand, four hundred and ninety-seven. Total insurance is eighty-three thousand, three hundred and twenty-five. Electric, nineteen thousand, eight hundred and twenty-seven, sixty-five. Fuel, twelve thousand, eight hundred and forty-five, thirty-five. Walmart, Ron's, Big R, Urban and Tatable fee, two thousand, four hundred and ninety-one, oh one. Garbage, two thousand, seven hundred and forty-sixty-three. Office supplies, nine thousand, fifty-six, fifty-five. NACOM, Hawaii, one thousand, four hundred and seventy-one, forty-three. Computer tech, five thousand, four hundred and sixteen, sixty-three. J. Smith and Twine for tip one and the BDD, two thousand, fifty. I think we have a development group. Tip and, tip one and the BDD, two thousand, five hundred and seventy-five. Green and Bradford, fourteen thousand, five hundred and twenty-five. Jackson Lewis Labor Attorney, one thousand, five hundred and twenty-six, fifty. Johnson and Lewis Legal Fees for Ken Morton Property, three thousand, two hundred and twenty-five. Meyer Austin and Autumn, nine thousand, seventy-five. Breeze, two thousand, forty. Hannah Limestone, four thousand, two hundred and seventy-two, fifty-four. Al Corfer, one thousand, thirty-five, ninety-six. United Capital Funding for Summer Help, four thousand, four hundred and ninety-six, seventy-three. First Midbank, one of three, for the Police Department, Rook, thirty-eight thousand, four hundred and thirty-three, ninety-three. Midwest Meter for Pipe and Supplies, one thousand, winner, eighty-five, oh one. Police Department, Watchdog, Video, Camera for the Squad Card, four thousand, nine hundred and twenty. People's Bank and Trust, this is the radio equipment, this is five of ten. Four thousand, nine hundred and eighty-six, ten. Fire Department, ANS Services, this is for the sirens, nine thousand, eight hundred and thirty-seven, sixty-four. People's Bank and Trust, radio equipment, five of ten. Eight thousand, three hundred and eighty-nine, sixty-five. Street Department, key equipment, parts for the sweeper, three thousand, one hundred and eighty-four, forty-three. Lewis March, five thousand, fifty-three, eighty-five. PH Broton, one thousand, two hundred and eighty-nine. Water Department, Clarkor Construction, one million, forty-three thousand, one hundred. Benton and Associates, thirty-five thousand, three hundred and seventy. Clark Deets, three thousand, one hundred and seven, twenty. Dickinson Hussman, two thousand, eight hundred and ninety-seven, ninety-nine. USA Blue Book for Lab Supplies and Account, one thousand, two hundred and fourteen, forty-four. Chemicals, nine thousand, five hundred and twenty-five, fifty-nine. Corporal, for a maintenance contract, two thousand, six hundred and twenty-five. Crank and Tenon, one thousand, seven hundred and fourteen, thirty. Badger Meter for a license fee, three thousand, forty-six, oh four. Sewer Department, Stevens Concrete Products, one thousand, two hundred and ninety-five. Hannover Engineering, one thousand, twenty-seven, twenty-two. Airport, Corporation Corporate America, one thousand, three hundred and forty-four, twenty-nine. These total of one million, three hundred and sixty-five thousand, four hundred and thirty-six, twenty-two.
Roll call.
Bruce Jones?
Yes.
Lee Van Zijde?
Yes.
Jim Allen?
Yes.
Martin Boda?
Yes.
Earl Walters?
Yes.
Larry Bud?
Yes.
Sean Burdell?
Yes.
Bernie Dornes?
Yes.
Motion carries eight to zero.
Mr. Mayor? I have a question on the last motion from the Water Committee. Do we need to amend that to have the clerk set a public hearing for the planning and zoning commission since that may?
Where are you going to put the sign on?
I'm sorry?
When's the sign scheduled?
After the public hearing.
I know, but. As soon as possible. Answer your question. So, I mean, when you set the public hearing, then you've got to have your ordinance. I don't have your ordinance yet. You just have to direct me to hear your ordinance. So we'll have it on the fifth. You set your public hearing on the fifth, then it'll probably be first meeting December. Is that going to be soon up with the sign up? Are you going to be that quick on it?
First meeting, right?
In December. We've got fifteen days. So your next meeting's the fifth. You can set the public hearing for the fifteenth of November, and I'll get something to you before the fifth, so then you'll lessen that and go ahead with your meeting.
Okay.
I just, when you set the public hearing, you've got to have the ordinance on file.
Okay.
So you're not going to really approve that ordinance or look at it until the fifth, it's only ten days. If I didn't get it to you before and you guys don't have any issues about it, then you'll keep the fifteenth. But you should have the ordinance on file, you send a notice for a public hearing. So if the public wants to come in, they've got something to say.
Project key, one thing, the nationary workers are out there currently, and they, this is all made out of nationary, they need to get laid for the weather turns up super cold. So if there's some way to expedite, we need to.
Then I'd say the fifteenth.
Okay.
And just, yeah, because this is, well, let me think out loud here.
Two, three, four.
We could do the fifth, I guess. I haven't said it's the fifteenth.
Right.
Brock?
Yeah.
We have four public hearings on the fifth.
Yeah, it's going to be a full night. You got that special use coming up with solar farms.
Special use annexation.
Annexation and zoning during that night. This will be a two-minute deal, I guess. Maybe.
Why don't we, why don't we do it that night?
We could.
All these public hearings, it takes the last two or three minutes and we space them out, so.
Yeah, the only one that's going to probably take some time is that Stanford could have come down with a solar farm. That's probably going to be a walkthrough, but I mean, it's going to be some time. Why don't we plan on the fifth, and do, I'll try, that means I got to give something to you guys before, what's today, fifteenth?
It's three.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, it's just, well, it's only one day, so it has to be in the next two days. It's going to be a separate ordinance, it's just, I have to do the code section, so. It's probably on the number five, and I'm going to, I'll be talking to your clerk tomorrow anyway on, on, no, I was, those are three or four public hearings, right, Julie?
Yes, sir.